That's to be so excited over school.
All right. All right, it is 6:30 on Tuesday, September 2nd, and I will call the city council meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Hillary?
Here.
Councilor Eber?
Here.
Councilor Holland?
Here.
Councilor McGuire?
President.
Councilor Robinson?
Here.
Councilor Fisher?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I, yes, same. Item four on our agenda is a presentation of a proclamation for Harriet La Mer. I did receive word from her that there was unfortunately a death in her family and she was called out of town. And so, of course, our thoughts are with her family and of course, we will reschedule that for the first meeting in October. Next up is audience participation, and we have Mr. Alex Brown. No relation, but...
Just part of the same clan. Big group. Thank you, Mayor Council. I'm here to talk about the 2026 budget. My material was a lot of numbers and calculations, and so I put it in writing and asked the city clerk to distribute it to you, rather than me standing here rat-a-tat-tat-ing away at you with numbers. But very briefly, to summarize what I looked at, from '21 to '24, the city's financial position has changed dramatically and for the better, much better. We've seen sales tax base grow some 50%, revenues were up 66%, while spending was up 15% over the three-year period that I measured. So, the city is in a different financial position than it was a few years ago. And I think that it's appropriate for the council to look at tax cuts as part of the 2026 budget. I suggested a couple, but really, there are many, many iterations and varieties of tax cuts you can look at. But the point I was trying to make with my example was that you could cut four mils and the coverage ratio of revenue to expenditures would go from 184 to 161. So, you would lower that coverage, but you would still be adding to a very sizable fund balance. But I think it's appropriate to look at that now. I don't think you should try and cut down to 1.0. I would never recommend anything like that. But I think trimming the sales is something that should be looked at as part of the budget process. So, that's what I wanted to say. I put it in writing. Hope it made sense to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. As I'm sure you know from your time on council, we don't interact, but we'd love to have that dialogue with you at some point in the future. So, thank you for being here. Reports from city, members of city boards and commissions. I know we have PTRC on our agenda. I do not see any representatives from any other boards and commissions. So, we'll move forward with our presentation by PTRC. And Manager Black, oh, you're over here this time.
Yes, I've moved. I'm struggling to adjust too. So, yeah, right.
Is this a permanent change?
I don't know. Oh, that's a big question. I'm not ready for that. Okay. But I, yes, I'll go ahead and provide some background and context for this plan. And then after that, I will turn it over to Chair Mary Presiken and Vice Chair Tori Levitin to present the plan itself. So, as you'll recall, city council updated the liaison program policy in January of this year so that it now includes the creation of a work plan by each city commission. So, PTRC historically created an annual projects and priorities list. So, we've gone ahead with the commission and reformatted this list really into a work plan. So, PTRC approved this final version of the work plan at their June 12th meeting. So, we've formatted these plans to include the purpose of the commission as defined in the municipal code, to give the reader some context, followed by the list of projects planned for next year. So, many of the things in the list that you'll see are standard tasks that PTRC does year over year with a couple of new projects specific to 2026. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mary and Tori.
Thank you, Emily. And Mayor Brown. City council, we want to thank you for this opportunity to come forward and present this plan and to review high-level the projects that we anticipate focusing on for 2026. So, there are six major projects. I'm just going to give a brief overview and welcome any questions that might come from you all as we look at these projects. So, the first is an annual line item, which is the improvement to city parks and trails. This is really a line item in the budget that allows us to be flexible to the needs that arise throughout the year. And with this money, we will be contributing to improvements that are needed in parks and open space. Most recently, a project that was completed underneath this portion of the budget was additional budget that was allocated to the Dahlia Hollow playground improvements. So, there are no projects identified at this time. It is on an as-needed basis. This is very typical for this line item. The projects come up during the year. The second line item is the special events. So, this is our largest line item in the budget at 21,500. This, again, annual line item, it includes events such as our scavenger hunt, movie night, the winter celebration. Recently, within the last two years, we included a table at the annual Bike to Work Day. This line item also includes a $5,000 allocation dedicated to the spring cleanup. Spring cleanup is not managed by the Parks and Trails. Public Works actually does the planning and the work there. The next project that we've identified is the review of applications and requests. With this, it's a zero-dollar line item, an annual line item because it is consistent with our, you know, the rationale for PTRC. And the purpose of this line item is to provide recommendations to planning and zoning and city council. A recent project underneath this portion of the work plan was the review of the application for a gate on a public trail. Next item is the review of the bench and tree donations that come forward. So, also an annual line item. The purpose here is to review those recommendations that come forward. This program, the bench portion of this program, has been in place for over 25 years. Recently, we included the tree dedication component of it. And with this line item, it is a zero-dollar line item because any costs associated with this program is offset by the donations received. On an annual basis, we receive approximately three of these requests per year that we review and take action on. Tori?
The, hi. Thanks for your volunteer work. Tori Levitin here. We also are budgeting for signage in the park. We're currently redoing the trail maps and we're really excited about it. It's looking great. It's a huge improvement in my mind. And we would like to install signage of the general park that you see on your screens, something similar to that. We haven't finalized what the image would look like. We want it to be really nice. I go to lots of parks around the world, actually, and I love signage. I'm a nerd like that. And sometimes I see them and they're not very in good shape. And hopefully, this is going to be as nice of a sign as we can find. So, that's what that is. The next item is to review e-bike regulations again. So, I've always been dragged into this. It's not my fight, but I will do my part to represent the constituents and try to come to a clearer understanding and resolution of our e-bike codes and laws. Yay, parks.
Thank you so much, and thank you to both of you for your dedicated volunteer service over many years and then to the rest of the commission as well. Does anyone have any question?
Question.
Oh, yep, Councilor Hillary.
First of all, thank you for your service as well and everybody on PTRC. One question I have is, do you, does the commission ever take time to talk about expanding our open space and talk about saying, hey, did you know this property might be available or this property might be available? One of the things you heard Mr. Brown talk about is talking about what we may do with regard to our tax base, our tax rate. And as we sit back and evaluate that, and we do need to do that, you look at the big items that the city may still have, one of which is Quincy Farms. The other one is the Highline Canal. Those are sitting there. They have to be addressed in terms of getting a sense. The other one, which is still in the master plan, it's always been in the master plan, which is to increase our open space property within the village. There's a number of ways to do that, but I'm just curious, and that could be a big one, as you know, or it could be a little one. Does PTRC ever talk about that in terms of, you know, this might be available or that might be available, or we could expand this way or we could expand that way? Because that actually could be a significant thing that we'd have to consider from an overall budget perspective and the cash reserve perspective.
I'm curious if city council member Rob Eber would like to talk about this because on PTRC, it did come up. I have been a conservation advocate my whole life and I don't know how to integrate private lands with open space. I did talk to a number of residents who, like myself, are conservation-minded with decent-sized land that they are leaving wild as best they can. Mayor Brown remembers, I did come with my presentation of the whole map of what the goals of my umbrella organization, Nature Conservancy, that I advocate for, what their goals are, which is 30% wild. So, at least on our 3.7 acres, about 1.8 or almost half are completely wild. How to integrate private ownership of land with open spaces has been routinely rejected as far as from a governmental standpoint, as far as we as a government are looking for participants, donations, easements from citizens. It's been frowned upon for the government to do that, the city council. And the alternative then is going with Cherry Hills Land Reserve or Nature Conservancy or any other agency that can work with private owners as far as increasing that. But from a direct acquisition of land, I don't have any great directions to suggest.
So, I know at some point in the past, there have been conversations around various parcels. None of them ever came to fruition, but there certainly were discussions in previous years. And so, I guess that's a good question is whether we've just gotten discouraged by that or whether those kinds of conversations still occur. I don't know.
And then that's, that's good. I didn't say, do you have any to recommend now. It's just, I want to know, is that a topic that PTRC talks about from time to time? Because that's where I would think, in large measure, it would originate from time to time. Could originate anywhere, actually, on council, but if it's not PTRC is where people talk about opportunities or different kinds of opportunities. You just want to know that it's a topic that you kick around.
Yeah, and I'll even add to that is that it's helpful to know that that is an option for us to look at. Obviously, I think you can tell that the passion is there for expanding the open space. And certainly, we talk about it from a passion, from a desire, from a, this is what we want. And so, helpful to know that as we think about our 2026 work plan, you know, and expand not only, you know, what we've already identified, but just our thought process to maybe, you know, look at expanding additional options for that private space. It definitely is something that has come up as part of conversation, just having taken action on it.
Councilor Robinson?
I have a question, yes. First of all, thank you for your service and for all that you do for our city. It's so important, our trails and parks and so on. So, this is really based more on my lack of understanding. So, it has to do with trail signage. So, I was recently talking to a member of our community who expressed to me that recently she was on a trail, came across an individual who was lying on the side of the trail in distress, and called 911 and had trouble describing where she was. And she was saying that the trails used to have been numbered, but now it's been changed to be named and that it was difficult for the dispatcher to understand. She couldn't remember the name. And so, it was, it took a while to kind of sort that out. So, I, I just took that information. I'm just curious as to your thoughts about it. Maybe others have, of our city, have thoughts on that as well.
I'm wondering if we can direct some answers to our staff.
I can start off.
Director Golding.
So, for probably 40 years, the trails had a numbering system, which was based on the postal codes and block numbers, and it was very, very confusing. So, it's been 10 years. It's been a while since we decided to go in and name all those trails. So, then we, and we did at the same time when we were naming loops and different trails that you could do. So, we believe the names, if you can remember them, just as easily, if not easier, than the numbers. We still have those signs out there just for that. You have to remember where you are, though, or it's going to be very difficult.
And there are, it seems that the trails are marked with signs, right? As you enter a trail, there's a sign.
Each trail and each intersection has a sign on it.
Okay, all righty. I can report that back. She's been a resident of the city for a long time, so I didn't realize the history there. That's helpful. Thank you.
I would also comment that once we complete the map and print the maps, a really good opportunity to maybe hand-deliver one of those maps to her because I think when, when you see the map and you see the trails and the context and have the names of the trails, it's going to help kind of reinforce those names. And also with that line item budget for enhanced signage, if we do find areas, if residents come forward with concerns, you know, part of that signage budget could be to address some of those additional needs that are identified by residents.
Could have extra markers. But my question is, even if she knew, well, I'm on the Cherry Hills Loop, is that what the five-mile one? I think it's more than five miles, but would a dispatcher know what that means? I'm guessing not. I see you shaking your head, Chief. That's probably the bigger issue is how do you?
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
Likely not, but the numbers also aren't, it's not like the numbers correspond to something on Google Maps or something.
Right.
That would be accessible. The best way is really, well, I was going to say, the best way is really for folks to describe where they got on the trail and where they are in relation to landmarks, Glenmore Country Club, you know, whatever you're close to.
Closest streets or...
Closest street or something like that, but...
Yeah.
A question for Officer Lyons is, can you authorize Find My Phone for cases like that?
There we go. The short answer is yes. So, generally speaking, if they call 911 off a cellular device, that can get pinged to a pretty small radius location. The other thing would generally occur is if they did know the name of the trail, the 911 dispatchers would ask us where that was and at least try to give us the closest cross streets. So, there are options available. There's not a perfect system when you get deep into the city off the major roadways that, that we're going to be able to locate somebody, but there are some options available.
Another question. Councilor McGuire?
Also, thank you for your service. My question is a little bit of a variation, I guess, on Earl's is, are there other areas that you would, you all would like to see, other things you'd like to see Parks and Trail Commission be able to do that you're not doing now or that, you know, that has come up in your meetings of, well, that's not really within our charter, but wouldn't it be great if we could do that? If there are things like that that come up, we hope you'll tell us now if there's anything, but, you know, in the future, bring that to us and let us know because I know you want to create more work for yourself.
Yeah, I mean, I can't think of any right now, but certainly appreciate that opportunity. I think we did some of that as we were coming up with the work plan and part of that annual process of putting our projects and priorities is to have that conversation of, you know, are there specific things that aren't in the work plan that should be in the work plan? But also, understanding and hearing that maybe we don't need to just wait for the work plan, but we could also bring that forward throughout the year is really helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Oh, yeah.
Emphasize again, I would be an advocate for outreach, even from a municipal government, to landowners that would be in the interest of our Parks and Trail systems. I'm not sure it would go anywhere, but I'd be willing to take a look at options for that. I don't know.
Great, thank you. Counselor Fisher?
I have a dreaded e-bike question, and I understand that it's evolving and that you're... you're looking at it again, but asking for a friend. Can you, can you ride an e-bike on the trails if it's turned off? Has anybody ever asked that?
It's one of the questions that we don't have the right answers for. It's been complicated, and we don't know.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for putting this together, and I'm glad to see that this, since this is the first time that we've done it, I just wanted to get kind of a survey of council. I felt like this is the appropriate level of detail, that our intention was not to, you know, create tons and tons of work and writing with a 50-page document with, you know, pictures, and so do people agree that this is kind of the level of, okay, great? Well, thank you, and thank you.
Yeah, I think that the thanks need to go to your staff, the city staff, which is amazing and does a fantastic job.
I really like this idea of more integration with the commissions and councils, so.
Thank you. Yes, we do too. Awesome. Well, thank you so much, and Sally Forth. Next up is our consent agenda.
I move approval of consent to agenda item 7A.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was not present, so I can't say.
Okay, one abstention.
We're not doing abstentions anymore because the charter says that we have to vote.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so.
You can note you weren't here, but you still have to vote.
So is that a?
Aye.
Okay. So that passes unanimously. Thank you for that reminder. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Council Bill 1, I'm still in awe that it's only Council Bill 1. Series 2025, amending section 16-2-20, 16-3-10, 16-3-230, 16-4-230, and 16-7-130 of the municipal code related to corrections to the zoning map, aligning recreational structures with the definition for recreational structures, addressing wall signs on commercial property, clarifying tree mitigation requirements, and correcting a cross-reference in the code on second and final reading. Director Workman.
Well done, Madam Mayor. That was quite the paragraph. So as was just noted, the next item on your agenda this evening is Council Bill 1, series 2025. This is a second and final reading for housekeeping amendments to the city's land use regulations. As a reminder, the format of the presentation is identical to your council packets. There's a table that describes the issue, the proposed update, and then the revised language below that, with bolded language being the additions and line through being the deletions. And because this is second and final reading, we'll go through this relatively quickly, but certainly, you know, it would make the most sense to, if you have issues, comments, questions that didn't come up during the first reading, let's just take them as they come rather than wait till the end. So the first proposed change, as was discussed at first reading, is updating and making the changes to the zoning map more, more in line with current industry practice and standards, moving away from the traditional technology of paper maps and, and poster board and things of that, moving more to a technology version of how we would update the zoning map should we find an error on it. And do want to note that we as staff did do our best to attempt to revise the language based on council's direction at fir-, at first reading. That second sentence has been altered so that the, the list of things that may need to be corrected has been moved towards the front. With that, I would pause and see if council has any comments on the first proposed amendment.
There was quite a bit of discussion about wordsmithing of this at the last meeting. How are people feeling about this result? Good? Okay. Please proceed.
Again, as a reminder, the second and third amendments are sister amendments because there are two separate tables that regulate the accessory and recreational structure requirements. The first table regulates all zone districts other than the R3 zone district. The second table regulates the R3 zone district. And in both tables, the language is being updated from recreational facilities to recreational structures, since recreational structures is a defined term within our code. Excuse me. So I would pause at the end of amendments two and three and see if there's anything related to those two.
See none.
We're on a roll. The proposed fourth amendment is to allow for the illumination of wall signage on the city's one commercially zoned property at the corner of Hamden and Jefferson-ish. I do want to note, especially for the benefit of those that may be watching after the fact, that this would not impact any of the institutions in the village, so any churches, private clubs, school, private schools, that sort of stuff. This would not impact them. They would not be allowed to take advantage of this opportunity. It would just be for that commercial property that's in the northwest part of the city. Additionally, would like to note that across the street, Cherry Hills Village Elementary School, that is a public school in the Cherry Creek School District, the state preamps us from the city from regulating signage or any other building or construction activity. That's under the sole purview of the state. So with that, I would pause on proposed amendment number four.
Questions, comments? Nope, please continue.
The proposed fifth amendment is simply clarifying that we use the primary structure setback when you, when enforcing our tree mitigation requirements. That's been the practice in the city for many years, but there is, we do get questions occasionally about which setback to use, and so this provides some additional clarity. Then the second component of this amendment is to reference a, a portion of the code that actually exists currently. C2 does not exist, but D does, so this would update that. Any questions on this one?
Nope. I object to changing the code reference. Yeah, I think all the other changes are fine, but I'd like to leave it as C2.
That's the one, huh? And then the final amendment before council this evening is, again, to correct, correct another inadvertent cross-reference. Right now, the cross-reference is, references the roles and responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission, rather than the thresholds for site plans and site plan amendments. So pretty straightforward, but certainly there's questions on this one, we can chat out. Nope?
See none. I would entertain a motion then, or, well, yeah.
We can go right to the motion.
Anybody?
I move to approve on second and final reading, Council Bill 1, series 2025, amending section 16-2-20, 16-3-10, 16-3-230, 16-4-230, and 16-7-130 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code related to corrections to the zoning map, aligning recreational structures with the definition for recreational structures, addressing wall signs on commercial property, clarifying tree mitigation requirements, and correcting a cross-refer, cross-reference in the code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
I have a comment, Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to make clear that I support this motion and this amendment. What we're doing here is that we are just reconciling and clarifying, we're not making substantive changes to these codes. I want to, you know, there, there are parts of these codes that I do not agree with and will be looking to make amendments to at some point in the future, but for purposes of this discussion, we are just clarifying and trying to not make substantive changes. So on that basis, I just want to make it clear that the substance of some of these provisions may be further discussed.
Okay, thank you for that. I'd ask the clerk to call the rule then.
Counselor Heller?
Yes.
Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor McGuire?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Moving on to new business, we have a public hearing regarding approving a floodplain variance for filtered at 4301 South High Street. We'll first act if, ask if anyone has a conflict and needs to recuse themselves? No, okay. Then I will call the public hearing to order at 7:00, and I will turn it over to Director Workman.
Thank you once again, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. This is Resolution 24, series 2025, floodplain variance at 4301 South High Street. Would like to take a moment, for those of you that may not have met him, Troy Carmen from Icon Engineering is in the audience this evening. He is the city's engineer. I also want to note that the notice affidavits have been provided, noting that the proceeding this evening has been legally noticed. Subject property is located on the south side of Quincy Avenue and on the west side of High Street. As the council can see, the site is almost entirely encumbered by the floodplain. The bluish-purpleish color is the floodway. The floodway is a result of the presence of Little Dry Creek and the historic nature of that waterway. This is the area where water is expected to flow during flood and non-flood conditions. The reddish color is the floodplain fringe. This is the area where water is expected to, quote, "pool" or "be stored" during a flood event. Because this area does not contribute to the flow of water, it's commonly referred to as the ineffective flow area. The ineffective flow area on the subject property is a result of the man-made culvert under Quincy Avenue. That culvert that was installed by the city many years ago is big enough to convey water during a flood event, but not big enough to prevent pooling or ineffective flow on the subject property during a flood event. When development is proposed here in Cherry Hills Village within the floodplain, there are two ways to process the application. The first is through the floodplain development permit, which is an administrative process that allows for bank stabilization and/or the dredging of ponds or lakes. The other process is the floodplain variance process, which is a public hearing process that allows for all other development requests within the floodplain. The next handful of slides will walk through a timeline of events for council. The city is requesting that council vote to approve this floodplain variance request. Aware Engineering, which was hired by the property owner several years ago, after having conversations with Icon Engineering, related to the floodplain encumbrances on the property, and a floodplain development permit was submitted. The applic-, that application was to stabilize the east bank of Little Dry Creek on the property. The scope also included the removal of an abandoned building that was in the floodplain and partially blocking Quincy Avenue culvert and filter in the ineffective flow area to create a buildable area in the R1 zone district. After three review cycles, Icon issued a letter to staff recommending approval of the floodplain development permit, and subsequently, staff issued an approval letter for the application on December 6th of 2023. Construction related to that approved application has since been completed. The property owner is currently in what is referred to as the Letter of Map Revision or LOMAR process with the Federal Emergency Management Agency. That is the federal process to formally amend the floodplain map. During an update from Icon, staff identified that the floodplain development permit, which as a reminder is the administrative process, was not the appropriate process for the scope of work. Changing the boundaries of the floodplain requires the approval of a floodplain variance, which is the public hearing process, which is what generated the application this evening. Staff and Icon met with the property owner and their engineer on July 9th of this year to inform them that the application would be pursued by the city. Staff would like to take a moment at this time to note that regardless whether the application went through this process now or previously, staff would still recommend approval of the application. While the application was originally processed under the floodplain development permit and not a floodplain variance, the project still results in a more functional floodplain, a safer floodplain, a no-rise condition for the base flood elevation, and a residential lot with a buildable footprint outside of the floodplain. More specifically, the work restored and stabilized a deteriorating section of Little Dry Creek that adversely affected the flood-carrying capacity of the city's Quincy Avenue culvert. Post-construction conditions provide a long-term stable channel section due to the shallower angle of the bank that will convey small storm events without erosion and large storm events with less scour. That's when the bank gets eroded, the dirt gets eroded based on the water. All of which reduce the potential damage to public and private infrastructure. Additionally, an abandoned building that was located in the floodplain and impeding the hydraulics of the Quincy Avenue culvert was removed from the floodplain. The removal of the structure eliminates the potential of the building being damaged to the point of failure that could create large debris that could be carried downstream during a flood event, and it improved the functionality of the culvert under Quincy Avenue. Further earthwork associated with the project included grading to the east overbank of Little Dry Creek. This work was material to the no-rise certification of the project. Reducing the severity of the grade in the overbank increases the functionality and volume during a flood event, allowing the no-rise condition. Nearly all of the property is encumbered by the floodplain. This makes the future development of a home on the property difficult due to federal, state, and local floodplain requirements. Properties also zoned R1, which entitles the property owner to the development of a home on the property, subject to the other requirements like setbacks. The entitlement of the zoning of the property can conflict with the requirements for development in the floodplain. This project removes that potential conflict. The filter associated with the project in the area of the ineffective flow removes that portion of the property from the floodplain and results in a property that can be developed in a manner that meets the setback requirements of the R1 zone district, without having a future home located in the floodplain. To illustrate this point, the image on the screen in front of you shows the subject property. The area that has the red rectangle, that is the area of the subject property that meets the setback requirements for the R1 zone district. The blue polygon on the right shows the pro, shows the portion of the property that was outside of the floodplain and inside the setbacks, or that was the polygon where a home could be constructed. The purple polygon and the blue polygon put together both on the right side of the screen show the, the portion of the property that could be developed in the future with a home outside of the floodplain. As council's aware, any, any application that gets submitted has a set of approval criteria that must be found in order to grant that approval. There are a few when it comes to floodplain variances. The first one is found in 167-530. Criteria 1 and 4 of this section are not applicable, so we won't address those. But for the record, number 2, the floodplain variance is the minimum necessary considering the flood hazard to afford relief. The bank stabilization work, the removal of the structure that encroached on the culvert entrance, and the filter not only increased the functionality of the culvert by enhancing drainage, but it also facilitated the grading conditions that created a buildable footprint outside of the floodplain without a rise to the base flood elevation. The flood hazards for the property are reduced by a minimum amount of earthwork to convey water safely downstream. The third approval criteria in this section has a few different components to it. Letter A, there's good and sufficient cause based on the improved safety and functionality of the floodplain that benefits the property and the larger community. The portion of the property that was removed from the floodplain was caused by a man-made improvement. The conflict between regulations is removed as a result of the project. Letter B of this section, not granting the variance leaves the man-made floodplain encumbrance on the property that prevents the construction of a home that meets the R1 standards outside of the floodplain. Additionally, the owner has completed the construction based on the approval of the floodplain development permit. In letter C, the project results in a no-rise condition that will be confirmed through the LOMAR process, and as noted, there are also benefits to private and public infrastructure. The next set of approval criteria are found in 167-360C. The first one, staff would like to note that while there was an anomaly related to the processing of the application, the technical requirements were met and will be confirmed through the LOMAR process. The second component, there is no change in the base flood elevation, and this application is to correct the anomaly in the approval of the scope of work, which was considering a floodplain variance given the ultimate alteration of the floodplain boundary. The final portion of the code that addresses floodplain variances, specifically letter 2, has a whole host of things. Letter A, the danger to life and property as a result of the work is improved. The floodplain is more efficient, and the threat the abandoned building, abandoned building posed is removed. Letter B, there's no facilities proposed, so that's not relevant. Letter C, the danger to materials that may be swept onto other lands to the injury of others is no longer present. Letter D, there's no change to the existing use, but there is now a buildable footprint outside of the floodplain, which is compatible with future development. Letter E, the work performed increases the safety of access to the subject property. There's now more area outside of the floodplain for access and emergency response during a flood event. Letter F, the cost of providing governmental services as a result of the project are likely decreased due to the increased functionality of the floodplain and the culvert. Letter G, a no-rise certificate was provided with the floodplain development permit. Letter H is not applicable, as this is not a waterfront location. Letter I, there's no proposed use, building or structure. Letter I, there's no proposed use, building or structure. Letter J, the area removed from the floodplain is not a natural condition, therefore it's not natural open space to be preserved. The scope of work creates a safer and more efficient floodplain that benefits the Quincy Avenue culvert while removing conflicts between regulations. If an application meets the approval requirements, the city is enforcing their floodplain regulations by approving the application. The site remains consistent with the master plan vision as a large lot, single-family site. On August 12th of this year, the commission held a public hearing to discuss this application. The commission did ask questions related to the difference between lower bank 1 and lower bank 2 of the project, the type of vegetation that was used, and how development upstream would impact the property. Icon responded that lower bank 2 is intended to slow and hold water to release it more slowly to the culvert. Icon also noted that the vegetation that was selected is common with this type of application due to its propensity to lay down as opposed to break during a flood event. Staff was able to respond that development upstream will not impact this property since Colorado Water Law requires each site to accept, store, and release storm water at historic rates. At the end of their hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this application. That would conclude staff's presentation. However, staff and Icon are available for questions. The recommended motion is on the screen in front of you.
So this is the public hearing. So the next step in this process is questions for staff?
Yes, Councilor Heller.
So very thorough presentation. Thank you, both written and verbally. When you say floodplain, it's a 100-year floodplain?
That's correct.
And is there a more strict standard, 150, 500-year, or we're always building to 100-year?
100-year is the standard. There are some potential distinctions between the floodway, where water is expected to flow during flood and flood, non-flood events, and the floodway or the floodplain fringe. There can be some distinctions in there, but here in Cherry Hills Village, we treat the 100-year floodplain the same.
Okay. And then the second question, which is related, when's the last time the floodplain maps were updated? And are they due for upcoming updates?
I would defer to Mr. Carmen on that. My understanding is that FEMA did a comprehensive update back in 2010, and those are the ones that FEMA uses at this time, subject to changes from private property owners.
Yeah, obviously, the nature of the question is, are we going to do this? And then there's an update, how close is the call between 100-year and not 100-year, and what could happen in the next update?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, Troy Carmen, Icon Engineering.
Your address for the record, Mr. Carmen?
Yes, 8250 North Pinewood Drive, Castle Rock, 80108. The FEMA maps were 2010 and 2017, and that becomes a process managed by the state. It's not expected that those would be updated anytime terribly soon, given the state of the National Flood Insurance Program. If it were, it's not expected that it would change this analysis in terms of compliance with the ordinance. So they would have an entirely new public process to bring those maps forward.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Eber looks like he has a question.
Thank you. Wanted to try and understand a little bit, for the work that was done, would it have been possible to do, I think, I guess what I'm looking at here is, the project appears to be on the green, the blue, the purple, and kind of the yellow. Everything that's on the left half is colored, not the kind of tan color. Am I right on that?
The scope of the project as it was approved?
Correct.
Includes, on the left-hand side of the screen, there's sort of the pinkish color, and then the yellowish color, and then the blue, and then the green, and then the white, and then kind of the peachish salmon color. All of that was included in the scope of work.
Okay, and so the end result is that it resulted in some soil deposition in areas that were previously below the high waterline, or the, I don't know about my terminology here, but it resulted in deposition of materials to bring part of the site out of the floodplain.
The salmonish color on the right side of the screen, that's correct.
So the white is still within the floodplain, and it's the dashed zone between the two that is the demarcation of the floodplain now?
That would become the new boundary. Again, the property owner is going through the LOMAR process, which is the formal process, but assuming that gets approved, yes. Everything, the white, the green, the blue, the yellowish, and the pinkish, that will still be in the floodplain.
And could the project have been done, so it looks like what's happening here is materials are coming kind of out of the creek and flattening the slope that goes up to and including terrace zone 2. Is that a fair kind of generic term, a way of describing this?
I would defer to-
So materials were kind of brought out of the creek area and kind of up onto the terrace zone 1 and 2?
The state of Little Dry Creek at the time was a kind of a near vertical bank, so there was an incised, encroached channel. So that terrace zone actually just removed that material to give the floodplain more space to move through its smaller storm events, lower velocity, less scour. It's not necessarily that that material was moved into those zones. It was actually moved out of that area so that there's more space for the creek, closer to the creek.
And all I'm saying is, to address those materials that were taken out, they were moved over into sort of terrace zone 2, which raises it out of the floodplain, or not terrace zone 2, because that'll still be, but in the, what I call the purple area on the map.
It's called the upland zone on the map.
Correct. The upland zone, and takes that from what was previously in the floodplain to now not being in the floodplain. Okay.
Yeah.
Could this project have been completed in other ways that would have displaced less of the, that would have taken less out of the floodplain? I mean, did they need to move all of that to terrace zone 2, to that boundary, or?
I don't believe so, not with the benefits per the code sections, not with the removal of the building, the stabilization of the channel, and all those other benefits. So any singular component perhaps could have been done on its own, but this one handled a multitude of objectives in one project.
Those materials could have been disposed of off-site, though, couldn't they?
They could have, and actually, much of them, as organic as they were and such, were taken off-site, and other fill brought back in that was more suitable for upland vegetation.
Okay. And then a question with respect to where crosses Quincy, as it kind of goes and pinches back down into the culvert there?
Yeah.
Do we see that on the north side of Quincy, we can expect additional velocities now as a result, or we're still, we have a no-rise determination? I just want to make sure that we're not walking into an issue with the country club.
No, very, very fair question. The hydraulics of the culvert happen in a sequential order so that that inflow location of the culvert is largely independent of the outflow of the culvert. So as long as we haven't increased the volume of water, we won't have an increase in velocity or scour on the downstream side.
I actually think, two years ago, if I'm not mistaken, the club did a very similar thing where the creek flows through, and it used to be a very steep, I don't want to call it a gorge, but it was a steep-banked creek, and they widened it.
Correct.
And made it less steep so that it wouldn't flood as badly as it had.
Correct, so to avoid the erosion and the scour and those things, right?
Yeah, it just sort of steps it out like a building upside down.
Yeah.
And then I guess, let's see, when Director Workman talked about the man-made object that's there, we're talking about the culvert that goes under Quincy, and that's been there for many, many, many years, correct?
Correct. I don't know if there's a date stamped on that culvert, but I would guess it's World War II era.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Councilor Fisher?
I do have a question. Are there other lots in Cherry Hills Village that are zoned for residential that are not, that are similar?
In terms of the floodplain encumbrance?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, there are many in the village.
That, that the people who own the lots can't build on?
Or there's existing structures.
Yeah. I know of at least one that came before council in the past where there is an existing structure there, but if someone were to tear it down and want to, or want to expand, or it would, yeah.
Correct. There's a handful of undeveloped properties with a similar condition. There's many more that are developed properties that are entirely, or nearly entirely, within the floodplain.
I guess my question was more about the undeveloped, or other people who might want to do something like this.
It's a much smaller number.
Yeah.
But there are multiple lots that are undeveloped that are encumbered by the floodplain. Much, much smaller, but there's a few.
Okay.
Yes.
Other questions? Councilor Robinson?
Have the property owners indicated whether they plan to build on the lot or to sell the lot?
Over the course of time, they've gone back and forth. It's my understanding at this time, they still don't know what they want to do with it. So I can't speculate one way or another. At one point, they had ambitions to build a home. At another point, they had a desire to sell it. It's gone back and forth over the years.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
Oh, yes, Councilor Boy. Just one, and so, obviously, we should have had this hearing before. Can you talk about processes that you've put in place so that this kind of a situation doesn't happen?
Sure, be happy to do that. I'd like to start by saying, I think Troy and I both have lost enough sleep that we've tried to give this adequate attention so that we're not here again. So once this had been discovered, Troy and I sat down and evaluated how we reviewed these types of applications. And what we've decided to do moving forward is, Troy and his staff will review the applications independent. Myself and our staff, we will review the application independent. Then we will sit down and review the application together. And then, once we do that review, we will sit down and review each of the approval criteria together to ensure that we all look at the same approval criteria. We're all singing from the same sheet of music, if you will.
Thank you. Anything else? Oh, yeah, Councilor Heller.
There's one follow-up question, maybe for council from Rob's question. So is modifying water conveyances like this one of the areas where inverse condemnation comes into play, strict liability if we do cause the hydraulic question that was asked earlier, downstream or upstream flooding as a result of this action? Is that sort of how it operates?
I think that's an extensive legal question. You're asking if this approval results in inverse condemnation?
Generally speaking, the modification of a waterway, it was my understanding that that would invoke inverse and strict liability if there's damage upstream or downstream. And not that it matters in the approval, I just want to understand.
Well, thank you for that clarification, because, yeah, for tonight's purposes, we're looking at the criteria. But you know what? I think I would like to get back to you offline about that one.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will conclude the questions for the staff. Then we normally go to the applicant, who is also the city in this case, so that would be redundant. Then we have the opportunity for comments from the public. I don't think any of the people in the audience are here to make comments on this application, but seeing none. Then I will close the public hearing at 7, I'm sorry, the public comment portion. I opened it at 7:24, and I close it at 7:24, and we'll move on to a motion if there's a desire among council.
I move to approve Resolution 24, Series 2025, a resolution approving a floodplain variance request for filter at 4301 South High Street.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, and I will close the public hearing at 7:24. That'll make the minutes easy. Moving on to Council Bill 2, Series 2025, amending Section 2-4-40B of Chapter 2 of the Municipal Code concerning qualifications of municipal judges on first reading, and I will hand that over to the city manager.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. I am here tonight to do my part to add to our council bill series for the year. So now we are up to number 2, tacking them on slowly but surely. Just to provide a little bit of background to council regarding this particular bill, as context, staff has been undertaking a series of efforts to help modernize and improve a lot of operations regarding our court. Just to give council a few examples, we have, we are going to be utilizing a series of new software to help with the efficiency and the coordination between various departments that utilize court, specifically the police departments, traffic citation software, our court software. Furthermore, there's a code enforcement software update. We've been careful to ensure that a lot of these are going to be integratable, and it really should provide a better user experience. Even people going to court are our customers, and so, you know, we want to make sure that we are really operating at a level consistent with best practices. The reason it's important, as council is aware from our last legislative session, there is interest at a state level to become more involved in the affairs of municipal courts. And so that's certainly something that has caught our attention. Additionally, there's been a slight increase in the non-traffic types of cases that our municipal court has heard, code enforcement, animal control, jury trials, or at least the prospect of jury trials. And so that's added a certain level of, you know, out of the norm of the typical traffic court process that we've had to consider. And it really has led to, in staff's opinion, a policy question for council to consider. And it's, in a way, I think it could be considered another modernization effort. And so the question in front of council is regarding an ordinance requirement we have regarding a residency requirement for our sitting judges. Currently, the code requires that our sitting judges be residents of Arapahoe County. Now, if for our longtime council members, you might be aware that all of our judges have been Cherry Hills Village residents. That has not been the requirement. It is not Cherry Hills Village as the code requirement. It is just Arapahoe County. But in practice, that's the way it's really turned out over the years. I think the reason staff is bringing this to council's attention is, you know, eliminating this residency requirement could provide more options in the future if and when we need to fill current seats, or maybe consider expanding seats, given the rise in complexity and attention that our municipal court is getting. And so, again, remember, if council did make the decision to eliminate that residency requirement, it wouldn't prevent or prohibit council from selecting Arapahoe County residents or Cherry Hills Village residents. It would just eliminate the requirement that it be somebody from those areas. Staff did look at some other jurisdictions, 10 other cities that we typically use for benchmarking. Of those 10, there was one community that basically preferred, it said, if applicable, practical, if practical, they would like to see the judge be a local resident, but it was not a requirement. And no one else, none of the other nine, had this requirement. So from staff's perspective in bringing this forward to council, you know, we would put this in the category of a potential best practice, and something to help give us more options and more flexibility into the future. So with that said, the, I do know that the version of the ordinance that was included in the packet neglected to include the appropriate strike-through of what the language change would be that would affect this amendment. So I believe it was left on the dais with the correct strike-through language for your consideration.
Yes, it's the-
Yeah, it's what's in the memo.
The word, yeah, the word A at the bottom of the first page of the council bill, and then resident of the county is at the top of the second page of the council bill should be struck. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion, and then we can discuss said motion.
Okay, good.
I move to approve Council Bill 2, Series 2025, amending Section 2-4-40, Pren B and Pren of Chapter 2 of the Municipal Code concerning qualifications of municipal judges on first reading.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the motion, although since we're looking at this now, raise in saying, hey, should we also strike of good moral character? I'm not quite certain how the council would make that determination, number one, without doing way more research than we typically do. And then, two, why, quite frankly, that wouldn't be something that we'd want everybody that we appoint, PTRC, filing and zoning, Board of Adjustment Appeals. I don't, I wouldn't want anybody of bad moral character in any of those provisions. So it seems to me like that, that'll be out. And quite frankly, if it was me, I'd probably strike the whole, that first, that whole clause and just end it at a practicing attorney or judge. But I'm okay with a judicial temperament, but I'm just throwing that out there to see if anybody else has the same views of that.
Mayor Pro Tim Holland, we do have a 64-point checklist to measure one's moral. I know that.
What I was gonna say.
My guess is I wouldn't ever have gotten on here, so.
What I was gonna say is I think you have a point. I don't know that I want to be the mayor that struck good moral character from the requirements of the judge.
If I could just chime in, it strikes me, while we're striking, that this language is probably a vestige from what comes in the liquor code and some other provisions, which requires licensees to be of good moral character. There's actually, you know, that's usually practically speaking done through a background check and, you know, convictions, et cetera. There's case law on certain offenses that do and do not run afoul of the standard. For instance, in liquor licensing, having a DUI does not run you afoul of having good moral char, you know, doesn't impinge your character as a liquor licensee applicant. So it, it is determined, there's actually another statute that you have to look at if you're going to do that, that talks about what they've done to rehabilitate. There's some other processes. In other words, statute does address this, not in this context. It just strikes me that it is a vestige of that. One could argue that if you left, to the mayor's point, the language as written, that if you had no indicia of bad moral character, then you could make a determination of likely good moral character. But this is ultimately a policy decision. I will tell you that this language, the, the rest of this, after the stricken language, is not something I've seen in those jurisdictions that I've sampled. They tend to be a lot more straightforward on professional qualifications.
Is there any, I, I mean, I imagine that the judges are appointed by the council and serve at the pleasure of council. Would there be any reason to have a clause like this to provide cause for removing a judge?
Well, that's a good question. Mayor, and statute also addresses that. In fact, the municipal court, or the court article in state law basically says unless your charter provides otherwise, you can only remove a judge during a term of office for cause, and then it specifies the reasons, which is guilty of a felony, disability with interferes with performance of duties, which is likely to become permanent, failure to perform duties, substance use disorder, or failure to meet a residency requirement if you include that in your.
So just having this, there are very specific provisions in statute. Just having good moral character in ours would not create an additional cause?
No, I think that's your criteria for appointment.
Okay.
Right? But we all know character.
What about disbarment?
Well, we do have a licensee, right? A state. Yeah, duly licensed practice law in the state.
Right.
And, but in terms of, well, we'll also have a contract typically that we require the individual or individuals who are appointed to, during the duration of their appointment, maintain all qualifications.
I, I, Earl, I understand the point, and I wonder, rather than striking it, if there's, I don't want to hold up the process, better, more timely words to replace it. Because it strikes me that other judgeships, this is municipal, it's, it's narrow, I get it, there's an extensive process. Background check, there is a, I'm not sure what the statute says, but the equivalent of what this language is. And to say that, plus the mayor's point about, you know, do you really want to be the group that pulls that out? So is there substitute language if it's the moral, you know, background that gives pause? Because I agree with that, but.
Well, if there was, if there was language, I'm willing to consider it. First of all, I don't have a problem being the one, and I was, so make a note. I don't have a problem with it.
It was him.
But what I know is, is that with this in here, and again, we're going to follow the statute. We're going to do what the statute says. But if this is in here, and it comes time to a point, you know you're going to have one person saying, okay, where is the evidence of that? As opposed to the reverse, which you would expect, which is, where is the evidence of bad moral character? And I think that would be forthcoming in any type of a thing at that point in time. So if it says this is what we're going to do, we're going to do it. So I think, I think it ought to be out of there, but that's, that's just me.
Yeah, I'm okay with it being there. I mean, only because I've seen it in a lot of other instances. I like having a criteria about good moral character, but.
But you don't care about that with regard to.
No, I do care about that, but I'm not looking, I'm not looking at that right now.
Well, I know.
I care about it all, everywhere, and believe it should be on, you know, something. But, I mean, when you're appointing somebody to be a judge, I think that is specifically a point of judicial temperament and good moral character. So that, I think there's a little extra oomph with respect to judicial qualifications. I mean, I think that I would like, like you, to see all of our people in all of our positions not to be bank robbers and murderers, and whatever else fits not being of moral character.
Okay, so there's, there's a suggestion. Yes, Counsel Robinson?
Just a, just a comment. So Counsel Holland, I appreciate the concern and, but I am persuaded by the city attorney that it is, there is some meat to what this means. And so I am okay leaving it in.
Is there anyone who feels otherwise? Okay.
Can I ask a different question?
Yes.
Sorry, I did bring this up, but in my firm, at five years' experience, you start to be able to talk to clients for the first time. So where does that, is that just practice? I would think that that should be 10 or something like that. I don't know if we want to.
Think the city attorney has some research?
I don't disagree with you that sometimes more experience in, in the chair, whatever chair, is more valuable. And I suspect that that's what applicants around this state provide. This is kind of what I've seen in a lot. It's, it's commensurate with other jurisdictions that I've looked at. It's just a floor. It's not a, you know, it's a bare minimum, right? But obviously, people can far exceed that and have far exceeded that floor.
I was just going to comment, if you were, and I'm not suggesting we do change it. Probably the appropriate is five years as a judge or 10 years practicing. And, but we don't need to mess with that, I don't think.
There, this particular section of your code has gone untouched for quite some time. And it has been on my back burner of some things to, just overall, generally looking at it. So I'm well aware that there's a lot of things that we could do to, if we're going to be modernizing, there's more to, to look at, right?
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve this ordinance. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I'm going to give you guys a chance. I'm going to give you an opportunity because I'm going to move to amend.
Okay.
By striking and putting, ending this thing by, at the end of attorney or judge, and striking the remainder of, ending the opinion of city council and individual of good moral character with judicial temperament. I suspect I won't get a second, but that's fine.
There's a, there's a motion to amend? Do not hear a second.
That's fine.
So we are now back to the, this is my practice in parliamentary procedure. We're now back to the original motion, which was to approve the ordinance as it was presented on our dais. There's a motion and a second. And this is roll call? Yes. Counsel Hiller?
Yes.
Counsel Eber?
Aye.
Counsel Holland?
Yes.
Counsel McGuire?
Aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Fisher?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Moving on to Resolution 25, Series 2025, allowing for electronic participation by city council members in city council meetings by rescinding the city council policy on electronic participation in city council board, commission, and committee meetings, adopting the city council policy on electronic participation in city council meetings, adopting the city council policy on electronic participation in board, commission, and committee meetings, and amending the city council rules of procedure. Clerk Gillespie?
Thank you so much for reading that whole title. And we have tonight a continuation of our journey of the hybrid meeting discussion. This one is actually for a vote. Based on August 19th, council discussing, discussion, a few more updates have been made. And, you know, any discussion or questions are welcome. But basically, that's, that's kind of it. Unless you want me to go item by item.
All right. Is there, we'll start, we'll do this the same way. Is there a motion?
Be happy to. I move to approve Resolution 25, Series 2025, allowing for electronic participation by city council members in city council meetings by rescinding the city council policy on electronic participation in city council board, commission, and committee meetings, adopting the city council policy on electronic participation in city council meetings, adopting the city council policy on electronic participation in board, commission, and committee meetings, and amending the city council rules of procedure.
There's a motion? Second, and a second. Any discussion? Counsel Eber?
Thank you, Mayor. Like I did earlier, I want to make clear on the record that I am in favor of the motion. It is one that we've had an awful lot of discussion about. And many of us on council have indicated that we believe the quality of a meeting may be higher by having personal, personal in-person attendance. But we wanted to try this. And I want it clear that we were in a situation where, in order to try something, we have to repeal what was there before. It's not in adopting this new policy. We are not saying that it is here forever, but it is something we wanted to try, and if it works, we'll continue it. But we couldn't even try it because it would have been in violation of a former policy. So we had to get rid of the former policy in order to try it, which is what this is. I, I support this trial and hope it'll continue to work.
Thank you for that comment. Any other comments? Counsel Robinson?
Question for Counsel Eber. So is it your suggestion that a year from now or two years from now, we revisit the policy? Or what do you have in mind?
I'm not, I'm not putting any type of a time clock in my mind. I think if a majority of council believes that it's not working in a way it was designed, that at that point, we'll put it back on the table and reconsider whether or not we want to make additional tweaks to this. But like I say, we didn't have any option, an ability to even try anything under the old policy. So I, I don't have it with a, a clock of reevaluate within a year. But I guess if somebody wanted to.
I think that's a prudent way to do it.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Dave, were you and I? Sorry. Okay. Just, just making sure.
I did, I did.
Okay, that passes unanimously. I believe that there has been, do we want to do reports first? Or do, yes, okay. So we'll move on to reports. I don't have anything that's particularly timely to report, so we'll go down to this end. Counsel Fisher?
I don't have anything to report either, but I had a question for Director Workman. So in the packet for the last council meeting, and then again in this packet, I noticed in the minutes that the people who presented tonight asked you to help them compose a letter to us about the state legislation.
The state legislation?
Yeah.
It's been drafted, it just needs to be finalized in order to provide it to council.
Just curious about that.
Oh, good question.
Only because I read it twice in, you know, two weeks. And then, did, Chief, did Brave open today? How, how was traffic?
Yes, today was Brave's first day of school. I was in attendance for both pickup and drop off. I'm happy to report that things went very smoothly. There was little to no interruption, and all of the traffic control measures were in place as approved. I will be back there both tomorrow and Thursday to observe again. But today did seem to be successful.
Do you know their enrollment by chance? Just wondering what the volume?
Right around 80 students in K through 12.
All right, Counsel Robinson?
None for me.
Counsel McGuire? None for me. Mayor Pro Tim Holland?
No report.
Counsel Eber?
A quick mention that my next door neighbor, Marjorie Rosen, age 97, passed away on July 26th, leaving, her husband Harold Rosen predeceased her two years ago. At 97, she and Harold had lived in the village for over 60 years, one of the, probably the longest running residents probably in the village. She was originally born in Salt Lake City and was a woman who was of great joy and a very, very sharp businesswoman, well ahead of her time, assembled a, a large real estate management property portfolio that was probably well ahead of many women in this era of being able to take advantage of opportunities that they were presented to her. And at the same time, she was an incredibly interesting woman that she and her husband would bull ski well into their late 80s, and that they had no problem jumping in their car in the morning and driving to one of the mountain reservoirs, catching their fill of fish for the day, and, which usually meant by 10 or 11 a.m., they had already reached their limit. Not their personal limit, but what was allowed. And that they were back home and eating their fish that they had caught by dinnertime. And they were an inspiration to my, to me and to my family. They leave, leave behind two children, Ricky and Barry. Barry lives out in California. Ricky lives here. And it looks like at some point, that house will eventually go up for sale. So I will have a new neighbor. But I did want to mention her passing and that she was a truly wonderful, wonderful woman.
Thank you. Counsel Hiller?
Yeah, just one item, a little tough act to follow there. Tomorrow night is the Centennial Airport Community Noise Roundtable. And so I'll report back later in the month on what there is. I will say, I don't know if anyone else has had this experience, but it seems like the volume and frequency of noise is up a little bit this month.
I think it is, and I actually, that did spark one thing that most of the noise, I think, that we're experiencing, and you're kind of over on our side, is actually from DIA and not Centennial. And I did actually receive a call and an email from a resident who was very frustrated about the volume of DIA flights. But they appear to be, when you use the flight tracking software, they're all big jets out of DIA.
I'll ask for that clarification tomorrow night, so.
And, and I will mention that as the one who attended those meetings before, and then you before me even, whatever numbers we are hearing in terms of audible scale, it still is a, a very small number in comparison to the areas that are so badly affected by the training schools that go in and out of Arapahoe County or Centennial. I do, however, fully agree with the comment that numbers, frequency, I think I've mentioned it to everybody before, that they seem to kind of come up on a north-south flight path that is somewhere right along Colorado Boulevard and University. And then right as they kind of get to Bellevue-ish, they make a diagonal to get over far enough east to get to DIA. You know, I do think that if those who are watching tonight or those reading minutes feel the same way as we do, that we want to start making a bigger deal because traditionally, we have not registered much opposition. we have not registered much opposition to any airport noise, that we'd like to hear it so that we can do something in response to those comments.
I think you're absolutely right. It's the FAA's jurisdiction, and unfortunately, I know as well as anyone else that nothing will happen, but it doesn't help when we contact them and they say, well, no one from Cherry Hills Village has complained, right? And it was never the, and this is always a confusing word, it was never the frequency, it's the frequency. It's not the wavelength frequency, it is the how, how many times it occurs, literally every three minutes. So it's maddening, but, so, thank you for that. Okay, moving on to city manager and staff.
Director Workman?
Just as an update for council, we are taking the issue related to fences adjacent to state highways to planning zoning commission next week at their meeting, so we will be able to report back to you on what their position is here shortly.
Thank you.
No report.
No report.
No report.
Our citizens' local government academy got our minimum 10 applicants, and so that is moving forward, and we'll see all of you at various of the three sessions, so we're moving forward with that plan. Tomorrow is the registration deadline for the CML District 3 meeting, so if anybody's interested in going to that, let me know. And I do have a correction for the memo under reports for the 2026 city council meeting dates. The July date should be the 21st, not the 14th, so I'll send out a new list for everybody on that, and thank you to Karen Strauss and Kathy's office for catching that.
Say that one more time, just the correction.
The July meeting is on the third Tuesday, which is the 21st. My list has the 14th, which is the second.
And then you noted at the bottom that we'll need to reschedule the December meeting due to Hanukkah. When, when will we handle rescheduling? I mean, do we want to wait until...
Is that necessary? It's not the first couple nights, it's not the end.
Well, I would defer to, I guess you're, represent, man, represent.
I mean, it is not of the magnitude of either Rosh Hashanah or Yom Kippur. Is it, would it be better if it wasn't in the middle of Hanukkah? Sure. If we can find a day that works easily for all of us, I would encourage us to just go ahead and do it. I think not only for those of us who are on council, but also just for anybody who might want to watch, at least we're not excluding. At the same time, if there's no date it works, then I wouldn't have a problem having...
And that day, isn't that a conflict for you anyway? So, because, for Counselor Heller, oh, not in 2026, it's this year.
I plan on being retired.
Oh, okay, okay. Never mind. Okay, so I would imagine we'll do that this time next year, when people know their schedule, or?
What's the business meeting? Retreat. Oh, at the retreat. Well, yeah, we can, I can start to gather people's schedules soon. I don't know if everyone has their holiday stuff planned for next year, but yeah.
I'm not even at December of this year yet, so, okay.
Thank you.
Just a quick note, I will not be here next meeting for you guys. Josh from my office will be here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I do have a few things. We were so efficient with our meeting, I thought I would slow us down with a few updates. First of all, I want to say Labor Day weekend was this past weekend, and brings my unofficial summer to a close, and that concludes a lot of summer activities that the city hosts, whether that's National Night Out, movie night, variety of events. I just want to thank staff for all of your efforts over the summer. I make it sound like it's unusual, it's not. It's really typical that we put on a series of great events over the summer. At the same time, I feel like we should acknowledge all the unbelievable work that goes into putting those on. So thank you to staff for that great work. I also want to thank the PTRC and Emily for being the guinea pigs with our work plan presentations tonight. It was good to clarify that was the right level. We too were curious to know, so that went well. I want to remind council, the car show is September 6th, in case that's on your calendar. I don't associate that with summer, that always feels like a fall event to me. And then, there has been a change, I'm not sure how much council's been paying attention to the news, we included it also in our Friday update. There was a pretty substantial change in the cell phone industry. AT&amp;T bought for $23 billion a bunch of bandwidth from Boost, and that will likely have ripple down effects, believe it or not, all the way down to potential Cherry Hills Village projects. So right now, I do think a lot of the folks that we've been talking to might be on their way out, they may be looking for other jobs, and so some of the plans that Jay and Paul and I had to bring you, some potential updates, may get pushed out just a little bit as the industry reacts accordingly. So just be patient with us, we are still in contact, we are still meeting internally, but also reaching out to our external contacts as well, so it has not left our priority list, it just is a new reality that we're dealing with.
Thank you. Okay, and we are adding, I believe there's a proposal to add an executive session, so...
And I move to go into executive session under Section 24-6-4024B of the Colorado Advised Statutes to receive legal advice on specific legal questions regarding potential changes to the Municipal Code provisions concerning municipal court and municipal court operations. I further move to adjourn the city council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second. There's a motion and a second, will a clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Heller?
Yes.
Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Yes.
Counselor McGuire?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Okay.